Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting, Kettering City Council. Today's date is April the 27th, and as always, we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin tonight's meeting, we'll pause for a brief invocation. Dear Lord, thank you for all who serve the Kettering community. Give us enthusiasm for our work and wisdom to make the right decisions. May we remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so we may continue to serve our citizens with integrity and purpose, always remembering to be worthy of these responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. Next, we'll move on to approval of the minutes, April 13th, 2021, council meeting and workshop meetings. Mr. Lauder.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the minutes from both the council meeting and the workshop held on April 13th, 2021. I find both in order and therefore move for their approval.
Second. Any questions or comments? Being done, call the roll, please.
Mr. Lauder.
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes. Moving on to proclamations and presentations. First one this evening will be a proclamation for Bike Month, and that will be read by Mr. Lauder.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a proclamation, whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Kettering's scenic beauty, and whereas with the continued spread of COVID-19, the need to highlight alternative transportation that is activity-friendly, healthy, and safe has come into sharp focus. And whereas biking is a lifeline for so many people during this time, whether it is the primary way people commute to essential jobs, the way people relieve stress and decompress after being home for long periods of time, or the way children get much-needed exercise when schools are closed, and whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health and well-being, traffic safety, and wear and tear on roads, and whereas the city of Kettering's commitment to create a bicycle-friendly community is evident in recent award designations, including the city receiving the Bronze Level Bicycle Friendly Award from the League of American Bicyclists and being selected as the host city for the 2021 Miami Valley Cycling Summit, and whereas the city will continue to foster relationships with local organizations, including Bike Miami Valley, Five Rivers Metro Parks, the Dayton Cycling Club, the League of American Bicyclists, to enhance bike safety within the Kettering community, and whereas with the help of various groups and organizations, public awareness of bicycle safety will continue to grow and will improve the health and safety for everyone on the road, which will allow the Kettering community to continue to be a premier destination for cycling. Now, therefore, Donald E. Patterson, Mayor of the City of Kettering, Ohio, on behalf of the city council and the community, does hereby proclaim May 2021 to be Bicycle Month in the city of Kettering and encourages all citizens to recognize the importance of bicycle safety and to be more aware of cyclists on our streets and on our roads. In witness thereof, the mayor declares that May is the Bicycle Month for the city of Kettering. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lauder. Lauder. Andy Icke, a member of the Kettering Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, is accepting the proclamation tonight. Andy?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lauder, thank you very much for reading that lengthy proclamation. I appreciate the, all the support that the council has given to this group, to our Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Just a couple highlights. As mentioned in the proclamation, we are having, hosting the Bike Summit here in Kettering. The Bike Summit will be May 7th, virtually, so that anybody wishing to come and see any of the presentations during that summit, they're welcome to. On the 14th, we're going to have a tour of Kettering. We're going to have several tours. We're going to start over at Indian River Park on the 14th about noon, and we're going to tour around Kettering. We'll run several tours during that afternoon and show people around Kettering and all the great things there are to see while on your bike. Also mentioned in the proclamation was the Bronze Award by the, for the bicycle-friendly community from the League of American Bicyclists. That award, we went from a honorable mention award a couple of years ago to a Bronze Award this year, so now we are equal to the city of Dayton and the city of Springboro in the region who have had and received Bronze Bike Awards. There are several awards above that, so we're going to keep working, making Kettering more bicycle-friendly, and hopefully we can move up to a Silver, Gold, or even Platinum level designation at some point. And finally, I hope you all have seen the new rest stops that have been installed along a couple of our bike routes. One up at the Dayton/Kettering Connector, just north of Wilshire, and then the second one at the south end of town at the Iron Horse Trail off of Hempstead Station. Both of those rest stops have shelters, benches, trashcans, fix-it stations, as well as a couple bike racks, so that people can take a little break when they're on their rides and get out of the sun. Thank you very much again, Mayor, City Council, for this proclamation. I appreciate it, and hopefully you all can join us at some point in celebrating May as Bike Month.
Thanks, Andy.
You know, I think we should, Andy thanked an awful lot of people, but he can't thank himself. I think on behalf of council, thank you for all the work that you put into it and your personal time and energy that is well appreciated. Thanks, Andy.
Next, we have a presentation, Goodwill Easter Seals Update. Justine Bauer, Prevention Specialist, making the presentation this evening. Welcome.
Hi.
I guess I said that a little too far away when you were from the mic, so sorry.
You're fine.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you guys so much for having me here. Thank you guys for being here. Sorry I'll be facing this way. But yeah, so today I'm going to talk to you guys about medication safety, why it is important, and what can our community and just as a single individual, what can we do? Go ahead and go next slide. So yeah, so misuse of medication is taking more than prescribed. It's taking a medication for a different reason than prescribed and sharing someone else's medication regardless of the circumstances, even if it is an over-the-counter medication. Next slide. So it's a national epidemic. I know we don't hear about it as much on the news right now because of the pandemic itself. We also had an election, but it's still happening in the nation, and it's also happening in our community. Next slide, thank you. So in this slide, I won't go into detail about it, but it's from the Montgomery Public Health, and it is updated as of last week, and it kind of just shows the numbers of the accidental overdose deaths from medication misuse. So as you can see, it's happening nationwide, but it's also happening in Montgomery County. And the numbers are kind of improving some months and not so much the others, but our goal is always to improve, so that is why I'm here to talk to you guys about ways that we can improve our homes and our communities. So reason why this is so important, Goodwill Easter Seals, Miami Valley, we go out with Generation RX. We go out to schools, churches, communities, anywhere where there's people, to spread this message because it's just so important because of the myths that are out there, the fact that we are a drug-taking society, so whether it's getting your wisdom teeth out or having surgery, most of the time we get these medications, specifically opioids, and say, for instance, we don't take all the medication, we just let that sit in our cabinets for a very long time. So we just want to make sure that we're getting the message out, so people are educated about it, and if they have questions, if they ask them, ask the right people. So good news is, like I just said, you guys can make a difference. So the ways you guys can make a difference is only using medication as prescribed, following those directions that's on the prescription label, or even on the over-the-counter medication. Do not share or take somebody else's medication. We don't want to do this because we do not know that person's medical history. We don't know what other medications that they're on. We don't know about any allergies they have. So we want to make sure that we're taking care of ourselves by only taking our medication, keeping our medication safe, so keeping it locked up and stored away, and then just being a good role model. So before taking any kind of medication, but specifically pain medication, we want to make sure that we're asking our physician all kinds of questions. No question is too small when you're putting a substance into your body. So asking them if it's safe. If you have a family history of addiction, you know, letting them know that, letting them know that, hey, I don't feel comfortable taking this, is there something else that I can take? Is there something else that I can do? And then just following the safe pain medication practices, asking them questions about if I stop this medication, what's my next step? What are side effects that I need to be aware about? Should I discuss this with my family? To let them know if I'm not realizing side effects, they might realize them before I do. So just kind of making sure we're asking those questions and keeping that communication line open. So next thing we want to do is ask for the alternatives. So sometimes we just want to be like, hey, can I do this without medication at all? Can I try some yoga? If you're too energetic for yoga, we got stretching. We can try meditation. There are so many different meditation apps you can get for free on your phone. I know that some of these things are, they are easier said than done, but sometimes if you put the effort into it, they do work, and it can be a great alternative and also cheap alternative from taking medication. So like I said earlier, keeping our medication safe, keeping it locked up, and not in the bathroom. I know that sounds strange because we all say we have a medicine cabinet in our bathroom, but reasons to not keep it in the bathroom are, one, the moisture from taking a hot shower. I'm sure all of you guys take hot showers. So that moisture can get in there and can disturb the active ingredients in that medicine. Also, what's the one place when you invite guests in your house that they can be by themselves? The bathroom. So we want to make sure, yes, we trust everybody that we invite into our homes, but there can always be that, just, you know, one incident where someone just is too nosy, gets into your medicine cabinet, and you no longer have your medicine that you need. So making sure that if we are not using that medication anymore, we dispose of it. So there are all kinds of safe ways to dispose. So you have drop boxes that are all over in, you know, like CVS pharmacies, anywhere you can get prescriptions, and Goodwill Easter Seals have these medication disposal pouches, which I have also brought some here to the council, which you guys can keep and pass out if people need them. But it's a safe way to dispose of your medication without putting it down the toilet, which gets into our water, which gets into our soil, which gets into our food. So these are super easy. You just tear them open, put the medicine in there, put water in there, seal it, shake it like a shake weight, and then just throw it away. That way, it's deactivated. If you have any garbage pickers picking for cans, they can't pick for your medicine. Another resource I just want to mention is the Get Help Now resource. This is a free app you can get on your phone, and it is great because it has the crisis care line on there. It's got the warm line. The warm line is really important because if you're feeling down or just kind of unsure about your feelings, feel free to give them a call. They're there to help you. It's a free resource from Montgomery County. So I just like to always mention that. Now, I know I kind of ran through that kind of fast, but does anybody have any questions about disposal of medications or anything?
One thing you didn't mention, or if you did, I didn't see, and I apologize for asking you, I didn't see a slide dealing with checking for expiration dates. You talked about disposal, but people taking old medicine, boy, it worked for me two years ago, I'm going to try that again. It's still on the shelf. I think people need to review expiration dates and then safely dispose of the medication.
Exactly, exactly. And just also just asking your doctor, like, hey, how long can I have this in there? Because there are some medications that you may not need to take every day, but that's definitely something to talk about with your pharmacist, with the doctor, and yes, checking the expiration date, because we just don't want, we don't want the situation to arise where it's around and nobody's using it, they forgot about it, and say, another adult or another kid grabbed it because they think it's safe and it's not.
Excellent presentation, thank you. I just want to remind our residents that in addition to the way you suggested of disposing medications, we have a medication drop box, disposal box, right in front of our police department. Is that not correct, Chief? And any resident in Kettering can familiar, can use that box to get rid of those medications.
And those drop boxes are no questions asked, okay?
Right.
It's not like someone's just standing there like, what's that medication you're putting in there? No. It is just a drop box where you can put it in there anytime, and there's no questions, there's no, you know, you're not going to get in trouble for putting something in there, so, yeah.
Thank you.
And I also have a couple handouts that I will leave downstairs by the check-in. That way, if you guys would like them on your way out, you can grab them on your way out. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Justine. Appreciate it. Next, we'll move on to a public hearing. Tonight, we have a public hearing on an application, excuse me, to rename a portion of Waving Willow Drive. First, city staff will make a presentation, then the applicant will have an opportunity to present. After those, excuse me, after those presentations, we will take comments for or against the application from those present who wish, excuse me, wish to make comments this evening and be heard. Now, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Any, excuse me, any person that intends to speak before city council tonight about this matter should stand, raise your right hand, and take the oath. If you're going to speak, you need to stand, okay? Okay, you four, okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you present tonight before the city council on this matter is the truth to the best of your knowledge and belief? If so, answer "I do."
I do.
Thank you. Please be seated. Next, we'll move on to city staff presentation. Mr. Burksdesser.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just for, for myself, with members here in the audience, my name is Stephen Burksdesser. I'm the Assistant City Manager and City Engineer for the City of Kettering. Been in this capacity as the Assistant City Manager since 2014 and the City Engineer since 2006. So this evening, we have a public hearing regarding a proposed street name change for a section of Waving Willow Drive to Marquesa Way. The report I'm going to give this evening details the request that was made by the property owners, David M. Dial and Linda M. Brodkin, who are the owners of the property at 1160 Waving Willow, to officially rename the north-south, north-south section of Waving Willow Drive to Marquesa Way. And as you can see on the, on the vicinity map on the screen, this is the area that is outlined in yellow, with Waving Willow being north of the yellow line and Lidle Lane being south of the, the yellow line. So Waving Willow Drive, it begins its intersection with Shant's Avenue and runs east-west for approximately 750 feet to the Dayton Country Club property, which is immediately adjacent east of 1160 Waving Willow. The roadway then turns and runs in north-south direction, which again is the yellow line on the vicinity map, for approximately 300 feet, and this is between the applicant's property and Dayton Country Club, and then runs to its intersection with Lidle Lane at the bottom of the yellow line, which would be the south end of the yellow line on the, on the vicinity map. The east-west section of Waving Willow Drive was dedicated as a public street and was named Waving Willow Drive in 1950 by the recording of the Waving Willow plat. There are 10 residences along this section of Waving Willow Drive, and they were built in the, in the early 1950s, subsequent to the establishment of this plat, and they all have Waving Willow addresses. The north-south section of Waving Willow Drive was dedicated as a 30-foot-wide right-of-way, a public right-of-way in 1965 through the recording of the Vernon M. Glazer plat, and this was for public access between the east-west section of Waving Willow Drive and Lidle Lane. Street improvements, which includes curbs and sidewalks, were not required by the city of Kettering at the time of dedication, so is currently what we refer to as an unimproved street. There was not a specific street name established by the plat for this north-south section, and has since become known as an extension of Waving Willow Drive. There were two properties that were recorded by the Vernon M. Glazer plat, one of which was the applicant's property, 1160 Waving Willow, that abuts the east-west section of Waving Willow Drive to the north, the north-south section of Waving Willow Drive to the east, and Lidle Lane to the south. The residence on this property, which is the applicant's property, was built in 1923. There's also a neighboring property, 1188 Waving Willow Drive, that abuts the east-west section of Waving Willow, and this residence was built in 1965. Greg, if you go to the photos, before I go into a little bit more, I'll just show some vicinity photos just for reference. So this photo is looking at 1160 Waving Willow. We're standing here on Lidle Lane, looking east at the subject property. The next one. And then this is just turning the corner to go onto Waving Willow Drive, and this is the subject of the proposed street name change, the north-south section of Waving Willow looking north, with the subject property on the left side of the screen, on the west side, and Dayton Country Club's driving range on the east side, on the right-hand side. And then this is a little bit further north on that section, the north-south section of Waving Willow Drive, looking at the subject property. And then this is at the north end of the north-south section of Waving Willow, again, the subject of the proposed street name change, with the subject property being on the right and Dayton Country Club on the left. Oh, excuse me. Yeah. Yes. So the applicants seek to have the street name of the north-south section of Waving Willow Drive changed to Marquesa Way. The east-west section of Waving Willow Drive would be unaffected, and it would remain Waving Willow Drive, as shown here in the photo. So just some background on street name changes, on how they occur within the city of Kettering. Street name changes in the city are governed by Chapter 905 of the city's codified ordinances. The process for street name changes is described in Section 905.04, in which a property owner may petition city council for a change in the name of a street. After conducting a public hearing on the proposed street name change, which is why we're here tonight, city council may, by ordinance, declare that the street name be changed if council is satisfied that there is good cause for the name change and that would not be detrimental to the public interest. And then just some additional facts I would like to relay before I end my presentation about this application. The applicants have requested the street name Marquesa Way to reflect the architectural style of the property. Only the applicant's property address would be affected by changing the north-south section of Waving Willow Drive to Marquesa Way. Other properties along Waving Willow Drive would remain addressed off the east-west section of Waving Willow Drive and would not be affected by the proposed street name change. Dayton Country Club would continue to be addressed off West Thruston Boulevard in the city of Oakwood, where the main access point to the clubhouse is located. Should the street name change be approved by city council, 1923 Marquesa Way has been recommended as the new address. Address numbers for this property in the range between 1901 and 1999, being odd numbers only, do comply with the city's official house numbering system, which is provided by Section 905.01 of the city's codified ordinances. The city engineer, myself, establishes specific addresses based on the city's official house numbering system and map. The current address of the applicant's property, 1160 Waving Willow Drive, has the same address number as the property immediately to the south, 1160 Lidle Lane, as you can see on the attached map. The applicants have expressed concern with incorrect mail delivery as the driveway for 1160 Waving Willow Drive connects to Lidle Lane opposite one of the driveways for 1160 Lidle Lane. The applicant's mailbox is currently located on the north-south section of Waving Willow Drive opposite Dayton Country Club. There is no impact to the city's official thoroughfare plan since the, since the subject street name change only affects a residential street, and there are no planned anticipated development or redevelopment projects that would be affected by the proposed street name change. Your Honor, that's the end of my presentation. In the staff report that you received in your packet, there is a staff recommendation. The recommendation is that the proposed street name change will, in staff's belief, have minimal impact on the surrounding neighborhood and will only affect the applicant's property as far as addressing is concerned. Staff sees no detriment to the public interest if the street name change is approved. If the street name change is approved, staff recommends the applicant's new address be assigned as 1923 Marquesa Way. And Your Honor, that's the end of my presentation.
Any questions, Mr. Burksdesser?
Yeah, Mayor?
Tony, Mr. Kleipas.
Steve, if this change occurs, does Marquesa Way become then an improved street? Or does it, you know, right now it'd be unimproved. Does that then mean it will have to be an improved street eventually?
No, it would not. It's already, it's already been dedicated as a public right-of-way. Obviously, the property owners could improve it if they so choose, but it would be the city's understanding that we would not require improvements based on this name change.
Any other questions, Mr. Burksdesser? Next, we'll have the applicant's presentation, and I understand you're doing that as well. Mr. Burksdesser.
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicants were unable to be here this evening to make a presentation, but they did ask me to read a letter that was submitted to city council on April 16th. So here we go, on the, the letter from the applicant. Further to our petition of February 2021, we wish to advise the city of Kettering, its council and agents as appropriate, of the following additional information regarding the basis for our request for a change of street name. We are the owners of 1160 Waving Willow Drive, Kettering, Ohio 45409. Records indicate this residence was designed in 1922 for Mr. Weston Green of the Green and Green Company, creator of Cheez-Its. Yet it appears to have been built for Mr. J. H. Behringer of NCR Corporation after he authorized alterations to the earlier architectural plan in 1924. Initially, and for many years after construction, the grounds were extensive. However, subsequent owners of the estate granted to the city the roadways both on the north side of the property and in front of the house, both roadways now known as Waving Willow Drive. The road in front of our house, which faces east, intersects with Waving Willow Drive on the north and Lidle Lane on the south. The road was initially called Rosedale Avenue, later changed to Lidle Road. Subsequently, it became Waving Willow Drive. Our Spanish colonial residence is the only house on the street. We are recreating its original grand street entrance. Both social and commercial invitees have great difficulty finding our house, and postal delivery occurs with only a modicum of success. Inasmuch as we intend to name this historic and architectural masterpiece La Marquesa, which in Spanish means "the countess," we request the street in front of our house become Marquesa Way. We have yet to determine whether we will, we will apply for historical designation from the appropriate cities of Kettering or Dayton. However, as noted in the above-referenced petition, the house does have historical relevance, and we are pursuing an extensive restoration. We thank you in advance for your consideration of our request. Sincerely, signed, M. David Dial Jr. and Linda M. Brodkin. That's the end of the applicant presentation, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next, we'll move into those that are for this, if you'd like to come speak for council. Nobody here? Okay, then let's. Okay, then let's go with the opponents. So if, however you want to come down, there were four of you stood up, so.
Come on down.
And if you could give us your name and address, and we do have a...
My name is Catherine McGuire, and I actually live, my street address is actually 1822 West Shance, but my driveway is on Waving Willow.
Let me just, okay, great, and we do have a five...
I'm a citizen of the city of Kettering, so I assume that I have a right to talk about...
Oh, even non-citizens, we let you come in here, so.
The first thing I want to do is to...
Can you, I'm sorry, can you say your name and address?
It's this mask, I'm sorry.
Oh, take it down, please. If you're, something, so she can, or do we have your name on here? Do we have your name?
Um, I don't know.
What, did you sign this?
No, I didn't sign that.
Oh, okay, then we need that.
Okay. It's Catherine, with a K, McGuire. And the first thing I'd like to do is thank LaShawna, because I have sent her some emails, and she's responded, and she's been great, and I really appreciate that.
We agree with you.
The second thing I'd like to do is say that I object to the, you're the city engineer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I'm sure you're a wonderful man, but I object to him reading a letter from the applicants. I don't think that that's appropriate at all, number one. Number two, there are any number of errors in this letter. This house is not the only house on the street. This house is the last house on Waving Willow. Now, they may want to make it the only house on the street, but right now it's not. Secondly, it talks about how the house, and it faces the street, and it intersects with Waving Willow on one side and Lidle on the other. No, no, it's Waving Willow. It's been Waving Willow for a hundred years, and I, almost just short of a hundred years, and I know that because I called the auditor's office, the mapping division, and I asked them about it. Now, mind you, some of their records are a little spotty, because it used to be Van Buren Township, and then it became the city of Kettering, and et cetera, but it's always been Waving Willow. And this statement about how it was initially called Rosedale and later changed to Lidle, that has nothing to do with Waving Willow. I'm not sure about Lidle, because I didn't ask about it. And the other comment I would have is that, how it's not going to affect any of us, that's wrong. You're taking away part of a historic street, and right here it looks like it's, sorry, it looks like it's a rectangle. It's not, it kind of curves around like a tail. And the other thing I'd like to tell council is this is a wonderful neighborhood. This is the kind of neighborhood you want to live in. It's a mix of single-family, and there's some doubles, I live in a double, and there's some other doubles on Waving Willow. We all look out for each other. We all watch houses, we see what comes and goes, we make sure that if some, we don't see anybody for a couple of days, we check on them, we have Friday night happy hour, we have weenie roast.
I have not been invited to that, by the way.
Well, sir, the next time, the next one we have, you are more than welcome. And these are wonderful, wonderful people. And we are very happy that the Brodkins slash Dials bought the house. We think it's great. We want them to fix it up. And I certainly hope that, and the garden, that should be fantastic. However, my understanding is they're going to put a giant six-foot fence around it, so I'm not sure we're going to be able to see it. And the other comment that's made in this letter that you read, which is not correct, it says, "Both social and commercial invitees have great difficulty finding our house, and postal delivery occurs with only a modicum of success." I find it difficult how they would know that, since they haven't even moved in. How would you know that you can't get people to find your house if you don't live there? And the other point I would like to make is that, a couple of others. There is, the code section talks about good cause. Now, good cause, you know, you kind of know it when you see it, but I would put it to the council that this isn't good cause. This is a whim of an owner who has a house in Texas, somewhere, Dallas, has a house in Mexico, has bought this, and it's a, will be a beautiful house, and it does need work, and has decided, you know what, I want to have my own street name. Now, that's fine, but I can tell you, I live in the city of Kettering, and I've lived in the city of Kettering most of my life. I graduated from the old Fairmont West, and I don't think that you buy a house and less than a month later you start sending letters to the city to change the name of your street. And I also have an objection to any funds from the city of Kettering being, should the council grant this petition, which I sincerely ask every member of this council to deny it, that they not pay for the street signs. And because not only are you going to have to have a little street sign made up, you're going to have to sink poles, because there is no street sign where that tail of Waving Willow comes around, and why would be there be? Because it's Waving Willow. And there's also no street sign over where Lidle and Waving Willow connect. I think that's all I have to say, except that I strongly object to the grant of this petition, and I would ask the council to deny it, and our next block party, you're all invited. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you could give us your name and address, and here again, we do have a five-minute limit, so please, thank you.
Chip Lidle, 1212 Lidle Lane. The first house on Lidle Lane my grandfather built in 1914. During 1913 flood, he fled out of Dayton and came south to Southern Hills. Now, the Lidle Lane, the Lidle Lane used to be his driveway. Now, they're talking about other streets, I have no clue about it. I've been there, well, I'm the third generation living in the house. The thing that I don't want to see is changing of this Waving Willow to some other street. I can remember when Waving Willow was a single road, and we'd come up, we couldn't get up to Lidle Lane in the wintertime, we'd come up Waving Willow, around to Lidle Lane, and go to our house. In the 50s, they built a platte there, so before then, there's all woods. Now, I'm objecting just because of the fact that I don't want to see street signs at Lidle Lane and the new street, and I think that's just blemish the sight of people coming through the area. So that's basically what I have, so I'm, like I say, I'm against changing it. I want to keep Lidle Lane like it is and Waving Willow like it is. It's been that way for, well, over a hundred years, Lidle Lane's been there for over a hundred years, so since 1914. And I don't want to ever see that changed. I may not be around, but I don't want to see a change, so I buy a house and say, hey, I want to change Lidle Lane to something else. I don't, I don't want to hear of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Your Honor, I have a quick question. I'm just curious, Mr. Lidle, it was, is the street name, I didn't quite catch it, is it named after your family?
Yes, my grandfather owned the house in 1914.
Grandfather.
Your gra, thank you, I didn't hear that.
That was his private, going up to his house, and then they put, in the 50s, they put the other house around and kept it Lidle Lane.
Thank you.
It was Lidle Drive, they changed it to Lidle Lane eventually.
Thank you.
Yes, we need your name and address and a five-minute limit, thank you.
Ariel Robinson, 1197 Waving Willow. Start off with apologizing, this is probably the first time I've ever spoken public, so I apologize to you and also mainly to my fellow residents. I'm honored to know that there's people there that feel strong about this, and I'm not the only one. In today's climate, it's unfortunate where we are, but it's politically correct, is that, you know, to name something that's, one, gender bias, two, is announcing royalty, again, where my fellow residents stated, in a community that is normally just very close-knit, as-tated, watch out for each other, and it just appears, and I know I'm speaking not of facts, but of my, through my heart or of my heart, in that you're just setting yourself apart from a community that's been established for much longer than I can state it has. And other than what has already been stated, I truly can't say, or can't understand the logic behind needing to change. Relatively, just, it's a wonderful name, Waving Willow, it's just relaxing. When I came and bought my home, that was one of the first things I was just, I said to my neighbor, Frank, Nancy, I said, hey, I just enjoy Waving Willow, it's just a tranquil, easy, restful name. Now, again, just to bring out something, because you have maybe the power to do so, or you have the money, or whatever the cause is, it just, for me, doesn't make sense, and I know this fine city of Kettering, that there's plenty of things we need to address, and something as silly as changing the name of the streets is mind-boggling to me. If we go there, then eventually, sorry, down south, what's going to stop them from doing the same thing? On that little cul-de-sac, they have the exact type of road going, and they're going to come up and say, well, if this community can do it, this community can do it, before you know it, we're all having problems. And if people can't find that beautiful ginormous house, then there's issues they have. As far as mail getting delivered and wrong places, I consistently get mail, because I share the same address, 1197 Lidle, 1197 Waving Willow. And as a community, we deliver mail to each other. I mean, it's just the way it is, you're close and as-tated, you look out for each other. And other than that, I apologize if I'm embarrassing my community members, and I appreciate both all your time, ladies, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to come speak? Again, if you can give us your name and address, and we have a five-minute limit.
Yes, I won't be long. My name's Catherine Glazer Kaler. You mentioned Vernon Glazer deeding the property to the city of Kettering, and I just wanted to tell you, I don't object, or it doesn't matter to me which way it goes, but I wanted to make a point that we're grateful that Linda Brodkin and David Dial have, are moving into our neighborhood, and we wanted to welcome them. We're very pleased that they're going to take the home that in the past fifteen years became an eyesore to the neighborhood versus being an anchor to the neighborhood. There's substantial improvement that they plan to undertake. We are very happy that, I live at 1188 Waving Willow, I did sign the registry, and we're pleased that they're planning to do the upgrades to the house and bring it back to the condition that it was in fifteen years ago, and then with the goal of bringing it back to the condition it was built in, the construction of the property was built, or finished in 1926 by John Henry Behringer. In 1965, when my father Vernon Glazer applied to court, divide the lot into two lots, which is Vernon Glazer Lot 1 and Vernon Glazer Lot 2, the city of Kettering said, we will permit, give you the building permit if you deed this property to the city of Kettering to make it a public drive versus a private drive. My parents had owned the house for two years. They weren't, they were not, they did not have a problem with deeding the street to the city of Kettering, because everybody used it already as a public street, but they lost about a half acre beyond that to the Dayton Country Club. So they bought, my parents had lost about, it was about a 2.8-acre lot when he, my father gave a half acre for the home that I presently live in, at 1188 Waving Willow, to build a home for his sister, my aunt. In order to get the building permit, the city of Kettering said, we want that property deeded to us. So he did that. When they sold the house after living in 1160 Waving Willow for 43 years, the property was in mint condition. There was only one or two items found in the property inspection, and it has deteriorated ever since. So we are, in the neighborhood, very pleased that the stucco will be repaired. That will be an extremely expensive repair, because the house was not maintained. The landscaping and the trees were not maintained. It was just very heartbreaking to see the property deteriorate. I purchased the home when the owners of, the new owners of 1160 Waving Willow denied, did not want to purchase it as an option. So I knew how well my home was built, it's a family home. I enjoyed the view and all the memories of growing up in 1160 Waving Willow, and I'm very pleased that someone will bring it back to the condition it deserves to be in. So I was with my father when the property owners took over, and he said, these white walls have to be painted every two years, the swimming pool is, needs replaced, the house needs to be painted every five to seven years, but it was not taken care of. So it's in a state of disrepair. We are grateful that someone has recognized the bones of the structure and the grace of the house, and that they're going to fix it up. You know, if that, Marquesa Way, you know, makes them happy, well, you know, but it has been Waving Willow for a hundred years, and I think it's a lovely name. Marquesa Way is a nice name, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Here, you got one more, Don.
Uh, you need to stand up, and I have to swear you in then.
I'm not sure, ma'am.
I know, that's why I said.
My robe will come down.
No, you need to take the oath first. There you go. You still going to invite me to your party? I'll take that as a no, then.
You must be nice.
If you're at my party, I promise I'll be nice, okay? All right, let me find that here. Do you swear a firm that the testimony you present tonight before city council on this matter is a truth to the best of your knowledge and belief? If so, answer I do. Now you can come down, and I'll be nice.
She almost looks like it, right there.
Yeah, yeah, same here. Thought I was getting shorter, my seat was going.
I know, mine keeps going. But I am short.
I am signed in. My name is Sally Frost, 1169 Waving Willow, Kettering, Ohio 45409. All I wish to say is, Waving Willow Drive is not a detriment to the new neighbors. It is not a detriment to them fixing up the house. We appreciate that. We are upset. We do not want the name changed. It is an old name. It's a very nice name. Please do not change it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I have a question of Mr. Burksstesser, if I could.
Sure.
I don't know if you can answer this or not, or maybe one, maybe Ms. Glazer could. Why is the driveway for 1160 Waving Willow, why does it come in off Lidle Lane? Is that because back when that was constructed, that homeowner did not have access to the yellow line on your chart? Was that not, did they not own that at the time? I'm a little confused about the country club involvement, and maybe someone knows.
Yeah, I certainly do not have the level of history that the residents do, and I certainly appreciate their comments this evening about the history of this neighborhood. My guess would be that since Lidle Lane predated Waving Willow Drive, and it was mentioned as a driveway off Shance for one of those original homes, given the time period that 1160 Lidle, or 1160 Waving Willow was constructed, that it would function, Lidle Lane functioned as a driveway for that property as well.
Well, plus, it's not unheard of. We can't get into a back-and-forth at this point. We have corner lots in the city of Kettering that has a front door on one street and the driveway into the garage, so this doesn't look any different to me than some corner lots that you don't pull in. you don't pull in, you go around the block and pull in, or what, you know, I, yeah.
Properties are not, in Kettering, properties are not necessarily addressed where their driveway is located.
Right, no, I understand that. Okay, thanks.
Alrighty. All right. At this time, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. City Council will consider legislation regarding this matter at a future meeting. Next, we'll move on to public comment on legislation. Anyone wishing to speak before council? With comments or new information about legislation on tonight's agenda, may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone like to speak about legislation on tonight's agenda? Okay. Next, we'll move on to, excuse me, to ordinances and second reading. We have none, so we'll begin with resolutions. Mr. Kleipas.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution this evening affirming the decision of the Kettering Board of Zoning Appeals in BZA case number 20-016 concerning the property located at 3825 Wilmington Pike. Requested by the Council Office, I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Bergstreser. Or I'm sorry, Mr. Swederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. The resolution that was read this evening would affirm the decision of the BZA in regards to the appeals case that you heard at a previous public hearing during the City Council meeting. The City Council had a choice between affirmation or reversing the decision. The resolution read affirms the decision. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Swederman? Being non-color roll, please.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Lawter.
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a facade and site improvement grant agreement for the property located at 3035 Wilmington Pike. The estimated cost is up to $25,000 with zero budgeted. It is requested by the Planning and Development Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Swederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. We Care Arts on Wilmington Pike at 3035 Wilmington Pike has requested Wilmington Pike Facade Improvement Program funds. The funds would be used to revitalize their facade and change their landscaping as a part of their site. Our, as you know, our Wilmington Pike grants are available for up to $25,000 and up to 50% of the project investment. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Swederman? Being non-color roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Lawter.
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Miami Valley Blue Umpires Association. Estimated cost is $22,500. The funds available are $29,000. This is being requested by our Parks, Recreation and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Swederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution covers the umpires and site supervisors for our summer and fall softball leagues. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Swederman? Being non-color roll, please.
Mr. Lawter.
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes.
Okay, Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for the Government Center North Building ADA Access to the Public Interests Project City, Project Number 01-108J, and concrete wall repairs at the Kettering Police Department and Shance Avenue Bridge. This is requested by Engineering Department. Estimated cost is $58,000 for the Government Center, $4,000 for the Shance Avenue Bridge, and it is budgeted. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Bergstreser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is for a repair project to the ADA Access Ramp that leads from the entrance to the north building of the Government Center down to the basement lobby for the Kettering Police, Police Department. It will replace the entrance ramp, the ADA entrance ramp, and as well as repair some of the sidewalk between the parking lot and the ramp, as well as the steps leading to the basement, which do not meet ADA requirements currently. Additionally, we will also include two small repairs that are concrete-related in this project. One is also at the Police Department. Near the ADA ramp, there's a joint in the concrete wall that has deteriorated and needs repairs. And also at the Shance Avenue Bridge over South Dixie Highway, there was an unreported collision which damaged a portion of the parapet wall for the bridge. That needs to be repaired. All these, these small projects are specialized concrete work, and so that's why we'd like to wrap them together into one project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Bergstreser? Being non-color roll, please.
Mr. Wanamaker.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Lawter.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for the installation of touchless faucets at City Facilities. Estimated cost is $200,000. It is requested by the Public Service Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Swederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution would allow us to install touchless faucets at approximately 200 fixtures throughout the city. Obviously, this is in response to COVID-19. The project would take place in 2021 as a part of our capital improvement project, and the funding for this project will be addressed in our next resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Swederman?
I have a question. This resolution calls for the installation. Does that include the material that's being installed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Being non-color roll, please.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Lawter.
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Kettering, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021. From the General Fund Economic Development Operating Expenses, $25,000. From the Capital Improvement Fund, other, $258,000. The estimated cost is $283,000. The amount budgeted is zero. It's requested by the Finance Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Swederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is 2021 supplemental appropriation for items that were discussed in previous resolutions this evening. The first is $25,000 to fund the Wilmington Pike Facade Improvement Grant with We Care Arts. $200,000 in our Capital Improvement Fund for the aforementioned touchless faucets. And then finally, $58,000 for the ADA ramp improvements at the Police Department stairs. That particular item is not new funding. It is simply moving the $58,000 from one section of our CIP budget to another. So there's no cash impact on that. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Swederman? Being non-color roll, please.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Lawter.
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes. Moving on to ordinances and first reading. We have none. Certifications and petitions. Ms. Skudinski.
Your Honor, we have one certification this evening. Planning Commission recommends denial of PC 21-002 zoning map amendment. A public hearing regarding this request will be held on May 11, 2021, at the Kettering City Council meeting.
Thank you. City Manager Report Committee update, Mr. Swederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a few slides for you this evening. And first, I want to start off with the, just a little bit of a construction update, and let everybody know that the Far Hills Repaving Project from David Road to the North Corporate Line has already, you've noticed some activity there. And the project will start in earnest on May 3 and go through July. And there will be traffic maintained during that repaving. But we do encourage residents to keep that in mind as they travel through the community, that we will have work on Far Hills Avenue. We will also have improvements on Marshall Road from David Road to the Washington Township Corporate Line. That project will be beginning soon and will last through later this summer. So just a couple of projects, and remind everyone that they can follow our website and social media, and go to our Engineering Department page for additional information on the website. Also, just a brief Ridgeway Bridge update, and that is to, obviously, to our residents in the community. They know that the bridge is being replaced, and significant work has already been accomplished. There will be another closure of Dorothy Lane at the bridge for the bridge deck, and we will keep the residents informed of the date for that when it happens. The Kettering Police Department, as you know, has undergone an extensive renovation over the last year and a half. And we would like to report that the Police Department Lobby is now open. So that is the lobby where you go down the steps, and our records clerks are there. That lobby is open. It's also the same lobby that has our prescription pill drop-off box. Our records clerks are available for fingerprinting and other items. Their hours are 7:30 to 4:00 P.M. I've mentioned this the last several council meetings, and I will continue to mention it as we are recruiting for our Parks and Rec and Cultural Arts Department for seasonal hiring for our summer activities. This includes our facilities at the recreation complex, as well as the Fray's Pavilion. So we certainly encourage it, encourage residents, non-residents, anyone who would like to apply for a seasonal summer job with us. We are looking for you and encourage you to apply. Our last slide this evening, sir, is just a reminder that the city income tax filing deadline has been moved to May 17 this year. It's, matches the deadline for the federal and state returns as well. You can have your returns prepared by our Tax Division at the North Building here at 3600 Shawyer Road. Our forms are available on the website, as well as at the entrances to both our North and South Buildings. So again, I encourage our residents to file by the deadline, and they can certainly contact our Tax Division for assistance. Your Honor, that's all I have for you this evening. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Swederman? Next, we'll move on to audience participation. Like to speak for council, please come on down to the podium. We do have a five-minute limit. All right, we will move on to council reports and updates. Vice Mayor Kleipas.
Thank you, Your Honor. On Saturday, April 17, quite a few of us were able to get over to Pondview Park to help celebrate Earth Day by attending the annual Tree Fest. Planting of shrubs and new trees in, at Pondview Park. That, that event is managed by Kerry Miles of our, our Parks Department, but it's made up of numerous volunteers from the community. They come out every year to, to help do that, and to do that celebration. It's always well-supported. Generally, the weather is terrible. We had a pretty good day on, on that Saturday, so it wasn't too muddy or too cold or what have you. The only thing missing was we, we generally have hot dogs and, and celebrate that way, and we didn't have any, any of that at that event. Last night, our Sister Cities Committee, we met for the first time since the pandemic started. The, the big discussion last night was, are we going to have Spasnak or not? We don't know. That sounds good, Spasnak or not. Right now, we're slotted for August the 26th for Spasnak. Of course, everything is subject to change, but right now, that's a good indication of, of change is coming. We're getting back close to normal. So hopefully, we'll be able to have that. And the Sister City Committee is planning, starting vigorously to do that. Many of you noticed that we've had an open spot on council since early January. Rob Scott is, has been appointed as the Clerk of Courts, and that spot is open. It'll be on the November ballot. So hopefully, if there's anyone out there that's interested in, in that, you can take a look at that. And last, as I mentioned, we're getting back to close to normal. Get your vaccines, wear your mask, social distance, wear your mask where appropriate, social distance, and when you're doing that, shop and support Kettering business. That's all I have, Mayor.
Ms. Fisher.
Your Honor, first of all, I want to uplift our Streets Department. The, the residents on Monda Court are very appreciative of the milling they did on the street. And it's a thankless job, I know, to be in the Streets Department, so I want to give them a shout out and thank them for all they do. In addition to the Tree Fest, Christ United Methodist Church did a dedication of a garden. And I just want to mention that their efforts to go green and create that garden will result in fresh vegetables being given to our backpack kids, as well as whatever's excess going to our families that are fed by our pantries. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Lawter.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would second both Jackie and Tony's comments about Tree Fest. I was there as well. And our Parks staff have done a wonderful job with that particular park. I would also like to reinforce again the idea that Kettering is hosting the Bicycle Summit coming up next month. Councilman Kleipas was correct. Andy has been a real driving force on that committee. I'm the council's representative on the committee. We have a great number of citizens that have been very, very active, but quite honestly, without Andy's support, I'm not sure where we'd be. And Andy and I are going to lead one of the bike tours on the 14th of May at 1:30. If you want to get your bicycle out, oil it up, and Andy and I will take you on a tour of the city. That's all.
Mr. Wanamaker.
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Duke.
I have a couple of things, Your Honor. I want to add a little bit to what Mrs. Fisher said about the community garden at Christ Methodist Church. That is part of a county-wide program that our County Commission and, I want to say, five, the Metro Park, Metro Parks are participating in. And, and the goal is to get as many community gardens as possible this summer to feed people. And churches, schools, civic groups, anyone can begin this process. And if you'd like to, to do that, you can contact Christ United Methodist Church. They would have information. The County Commission would have information. But community gardens are becoming really very popular, as, as many folks are, are struggling with, with food over the summer. The only other thing I want to mention, Your Honor, is in the paper today, and I, I just, it's important to, to bring it up. It's a vaccination clinic that is being held starting tomorrow, Sinclair Community College Centerville, located at 5800 Clio Road. Tomorrow, from 1:00 to 5:00, they have 1,000 doses available of either Johnson &amp; Johnson or Pfizer, whichever one you choose. If you have not had your first shot, you will need to make an appointment. And you can do that by simply calling Dayton and Montgomery County at 937-225-6217. That's tomorrow. It's very short notice. But then on May 1, from 9:00 until noon, they have 750 appointments available. So again, if you have not had your first shot, you need to make an appointment. If you're three weeks out from your first shot, you do not need an appointment to go and get your second shot if you had the Pfizer shot the first time around. If you had the J&amp;J shot, you would not need a second shot. But I think it's important that we, as elected officials and citizens, try to get everybody possible we can to get vaccinated, because if we're going to get the herd immunity, we all have to go do that. So that's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duke. Just a couple of things. One, had the opportunity to participate in a ribbon cutting for Needle Ink and Thread on the 15th of April. We wish them the best of luck. They're located, probably the easiest thing to say is, in the Dots Market Shopping Center area there. So on the 14th, we said goodbye to Andy Heidel, Hiddle, I can't get that right, his retirement. And I can't remember the number of years, but it was like 40, 40, 46 years. So wish Andy the, the best of luck. Mr. Kleipas hit on Jackie
can do that by simply calling Dayton and Montgomery County at 937-225-6217. That's tomorrow, it's very short notice. But then on May 1, from 9:00 until noon, they have 750 appointments available. So again, if you have not had your first shot, you need to make an appointment. If you're three weeks out from your first shot, you do not need an appointment to go and get your second shot if you had the Pfizer shot the first time around. If you had the J&amp;J shot, you would not need a second shot. But I think it's important that we, as elected officials and citizens, try to get everybody possible we can to get vaccinated, because if we're gonna get the herd immunity, we all have to go do that. So that's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duke. Just a couple of things. One, I had the opportunity to participate in a ribbon cutting for Needle Ink and Thread on the 15th of April. We wish them the best of luck. They're located, probably the easiest thing to say is, in the Dots Market Shopping Center area there. So on the 14th, we said goodbye to Andy Heidel, Hiddle, I can't get that right, his retirement. And I can't remember the number of years, but it was like 40, 40, 46 years. So wish Andy the, the best of luck.